All right, good morning. Welcome to the seventh December regular meeting of State County Commission. Today, we also have a special meeting item on the agenda with regard to the FEMA designation that we'll get to in a minute. Turn around, stand for the pledge of allegiance. Western.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which stands on the nation under principle.
Okay, so the special agenda item is with regard to the FEMA designation. So Fayette County didn't qualify for FEMA assistance with regard to the damage to our public infrastructures. More like government assistance, what happened to the jail, the PSDs, that sort of thing. What it did not qualify for was private damage to homes and things like that. We were, our assistance was combined with Canaw County's and maybe even another county, but I know at least Canaw County's. And Canaw County Commission had gone back to the governor and asked him to appeal FEMA's decision on the latter. And I asked that we put this on the agenda so we could similarly appeal that. I don't think it's going to do him good, but you know, it wouldn't hurt, might help. So do we have a letter?
About. I mean, we could probably get Kevin to negotiate it. Kevin's on the way to the emergency management of something in West, so it won't be here. It might be something he's want. Any appeal or?
I think the appeal is probably in the form of a letter. I think that's what they did. So I think we probably just need to prove the letter in concept and then the, we can get the language down after the meeting.
And the state. That would help with whatever needs to be done.
Okay, sweet. So since this is our last meeting in December, I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve a letter, sending a letter to the governor to ask them to appeal with the president for FEMA designation for households.
There.
All those in favor? Okay, and we need to certify the remaining 20.2 general election results with counties. Were those Michelle?
Um, I think the last ones to come in were Calhoun and McDowell. So they both had to do hand counts.
Do you have new numbers somewhere?
Um, these are just, no, they're new. I mean, our numbers are exactly the same. It's just the certification of the four amendments in the US Congress race.
Okay, so we didn't have any changes.
Our numbers have been the same. We just had to wait until everybody else got finished. You are.
Okay, I move we certify the entirety of the 20.2 general election results. All those in favor? Is that it?
No, no one for results.
Well, I'll have to.
If the exoneration version, remind divine, bypass that. We have to approve both hats of December payroll.
Make a motion to approve December payroll payable on December fifteenth and thirtieth.
All those in favor? Vouchers and invoices, I saw additional voucher information on the desk. Is there anything?
No, it was a couple that came in. They wanted to get out before they ended the year.
Okay, so there's nothing, then you go about them, they're just?
No, we're just trying to get them out.
All right. I move we approve the vouchers and invoices.
Sure.
All those in favor? Okay, I didn't finish the minutes. States settlements.
Have any concerns? Any states settlements?
Um, she should have bought some.
Yeah, they're over there. I'll go again. You know what that is?
Or what they received for.
I move we approve the state settlements.
Sure.
All those in favor?
All right, John. See, I'll get up in here now.
All right, Ruth, you want to knock a couple of things out before we vote Fayette County Humane Society? Seven minutes.
Yep. The first thing is with the letter you found earlier about the board of people. The notify, cross signature. And we assess her.
My motion.
A second. All those in favor? She's got another one, but she wanted to change.
The next one is the letter to the Public Service Commission regarding the Armstrong Creek PSD.
Okay, I have, it's been about eighteen hours in the last four days. This is what I've discovered. Armstrong Creek PSD refused help from West Virginia American Water in the form of a water buffalo. That decision was made not by the water commissioners, but by an operator of the water plant itself. The water commissioners need to take control of PSD and not have the employees making decisions that commissioners should be making. The PSD is currently start, starting an upgrade on the water system. This project will start in 2023 and give the customers better service than what they were currently receiving. I've sent each of the county commissioners information that was obtained from Leslie Taylor from Region Four, along with notes from the last water project conference call. The information was obtained from the PSC website and information contains their financial data, loan information, and the most recent annual report. Before Thanksgiving, several calls from the customers were received by the county commission office. Each of those customers had one thing in common, they didn't have water right at Thanksgiving. Customers also called the PSC and a number of calls were received, so many calls received that the PSC sent their engineer along with help from West Virginia American Water to Armstrong Creek PSD to help find the leaks and make the repairs. The repairs actually took two days to complete and right now I'm not aware of any other additional issues that they're having with the water lines since they've been serviced. Kevin Walker, again, who is our emergency manager, was able to set up a delivery of a water buffalo from West Virginia American Water and the water had been accepted along with several gallons of water that we took to the fire department. The PSD, along with others in its state, are under financial strain due to not wanting to increase their water rates. The PSD does not have the man or woman power to tackle large projects. This PSD doesn't have the equipment needed to ensure quick repairs on water lines. Simply, this PSD needs to file for an emergency rate increase to meet their financial obligations and attain equipment needed to make necessary repairs. If West Virginia American Water or any other PSD is allowed to take over the system, it could take eighteen to twenty-four months before the new system can take over and would automatically stop the much-needed water project that's getting ready to start in 2023. My final thoughts, the customers must come first. The water commissioners need to step up and run the system and not allow employees to make decisions that only commissioners should make. We need to allow this water project to continue with oversight by the county commission in Region Four. And if help is being offered, just accept it and simply say thank you. So that's what I dug up into Armstrong Creek PSD.
Well, I, not realizing that for some reason that that was the issue this letter was about, I want to skip that for a minute because we put the Humane Society on for, well, nine fifteen. And I feel like the discussions might take a little longer than a slate. So everybody hold that thought and I don't want to do the municipality's letter about the school transfer order. Can we knock that out in three minutes?
It's Tom's favorite.
Yes.
Just for Tom. So it's the order you signed here where you transfer the money from the general support fund, thirty thousand dollars, to the general fund and helps pay for cost and care and feeding of misdemeanor prisoners incarcerated by magistrates, thirty thousand dollars to the budget. That's what's there.
Move we approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Go ahead to the PSD.
We appoint David O'Carroll from Robert Williams PSD for the time of the sky. And this is the one. We're bonded about no one sees resign.
Okay, so we're good with this?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve this.
All those in favor? All right, let's do the Fayette County Humane Society. We're here?
Yeah.
Come on up to the mic, please, because that'll help the people who are getting some.
Good.
Okay, so Kim Mitchell from Fayette County Humane Society. And what we're asking for right now, we're finding a need for two part-time employees at the moment. Our shelter is almost at capacity and we're finding that we need a little bit more assistance than what we had projected. And we have a three-month goal. We want to increase rescues and have more rescue partners. That comes with having the van and bedding. And we also want to start vaccine clinics and rabies clinics and things like that that would project us to more independence by the power we have. So we're like, that's what I need is right.
You know what salaries you want to offer the part-time employees?
Maybe ten dollars an hour for one quarter plan of four would be twenty-two million, three hundred and ninety-one dollars a year. But we thought we would put that into, we have holes on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday in the dog building and Friday, Saturday, Monday, and Tuesday in the cattle. So if we had two part-time employees, we could have one for each building.
Ruth has already told us the budget, this one letter you guys sent, but the budget would accommodate that. I move that we approve the additional funding the Fayette County Humane Society has requested.
Second.
The hires and we'll start with the hires. Okay. Second, all those in favor? And also move that we approve the additional ten thousand dollars to the startup fund that it requested in the letter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Just for the public's information, she mentioned, Kim mentioned some of the things, but, but the additional funds, we've been tracking everything they spent the funds on and it's been all directly associated with cleaning supplies, vaccines, dewarmer, vet bills, syringes, needles, and things to help them start their fundraising. They are planning to start a spaying and neutering program, build more rescue relationships, perform low-cost vaccination plans for the community, and incorporate a public outreach program. So those are the, the objectives that they outlined for us here. And they did outline, as Kim just did, the reasons they needed additional staff to fill some holes they have in their schedule for being there.
And they've done a, a good job start off with.
Yeah. So.
Do you want to go back to this?
PSD, yeah, let's go ahead and.
Okay, so with, with everything that I've discovered over this last research period, I don't feel that we need to send a letter to the PSC. I just think that we need to go ahead and let them do their, their water upgrade. But I would like, I, I really recommend that they go ahead and try to get another increase before this upgrade is done and then an increase after the upgrade is being completed. And Leslie can speak to that.
Is anyone from the PSD here?
No, they're not.
So the current project, you're absolutely right. The current project that we've been working on the PSD, this is also the project that the commission got a community development block grant for. That's been in the works for about five years. We've spent it slowly due to numerous issues at the PSD and with the project. If a letter would go to the Public Service Commission today to say, we would really like for someone else to take over this PSD, that in essence stops the current project as it is, because the funding agencies aren't going to do anything else with it or allow us to move forward with the project in its current form. So probably the wisest thing and the easiest way to get relief for the customers to interview with current project.
Okay, what about, what do we need to do to address the commission's failure to meet and address things?
I would encourage you to invite them in and have a one-on-one meeting with them.
That, that's a great idea. Now, unfortunately, well, we'll talk.
Oh. I don't understand why they're not here.
I don't either.
And we'll, we'll be glad to attend as well with another update on the project. I believe Mr. Brennaman has the most recent information on the project.
I forwarded it all to them since twenty-two. What bothers me is they refuse. Just my customers didn't have water. That really bothers me. Well, I, I, that's, that's very frustrating because all they're doing is certainly run companies.
So I will also mention that that original project was about two point five million dollars. That cost estimate's kind of old. So the current, we've asked for that date of cost estimate and it's up about one point two seven million dollars. So it's our anticipation that we're going to file an application with the WDA for some economic enhancement grant fund. Not guaranteed that we'll get it, but that's our, our next point is to address the cost increase by submitting the funding change request to the infrastructure council and then submitting an application to WDA for economic enhancement grant fund.
Is there any way the commission, I see we called it and then we had a meeting with them. And is there any way we can convene an agreement if something like this happens again, that there's steps put in, that they cannot refuse any assistance?
That's probably going to be a legal question and definitely out of my separate.
And okay, so I'm just telling you my thoughts on this thing about refusing assistance. And they don't have that water.
Well, it's just been a couple of weeks ago that I think you were getting a bunch of calls from them and I was getting a bunch of calls from residents and they did all have the same common problem. They didn't have water. Plus, it was being told in that area that the county commission had gotten a grant for the project, but they weren't allowing the PSD to use that grant fund, which is absolutely incorrect.
Passion the buck.
So we did, I had six calls on, I was thinking on a Friday. And so six times, we explained the life cycle of a project to folks that were pretty angry because they wake up in the morning and can't take a shower before they go to work.
Well, me, from what I understood, they had, before the first person called us, it had been about ten days that they didn't have water. I mean, they had been without water for some time before the call started coming in.
I, I think that what they're, what they learned was that there were so many issues with the system that they had to shut the system off in order to build up water in the tank to be able to serve folks. And that's of course less than I knew. And I'm not sure if you are aware, but Armstrong PSD is, is the oldest PSD in the state of West Virginia.
And where they refuse to raise the rates on their customers that in turn threw their system behind even here. So in order to meet their obligations, they just need to increase their rates.
So I understand where, if West Virginia American Water took it over, the grants could be jeopardized. But what about if another PSD took it over? That would, again, that would have to be talked with bond counsel and legal counsel because of the debt that Armstrong PSD currently has. I mean, it's not unheard of. If it's a private company like West Virginia American, of course, that in this stops everything. But if it's a merger with another PSD, they can actually work together to continue on the path to get the, the system fixed.
And Armstrong was already a merger, they merged with.
Deepwater.
Deepwater.
Back in the two thousand six, two thousand seven, Armstrong PSD merged with Deepwater PSD.
Yeah.
That, I mean, refusing the water, that's a, I mean, that's a no-brainer. That was a mistake. And, and when I talked to Kevin, I was like, get the water there anyway. And I don't know why they get to refuse water when people don't have water. I don't even think that's their fault.
No.
So, you know, I just told Kevin, if I'm, you know, we work with the fire department and other strong big athletes, but the buffalo was really, so it wouldn't freeze.
Right.
That was the issue and, and we did that. And that's how it ended up getting out there to start with. But, but you know, these are people who, they're not complainers. Like I said, they were without water for several days before we heard peep from anybody. And then the rest of the peeps came in, but, but I think it's, I think it's unacceptable and I think it's negligence on behalf of the board. I like to take a look at who's there and meet with them. And then if they don't have answers to our satisfaction, I think we really need to look at seeing if Calhoun Falls or another PSD can partner with them. I don't know how feasible that is, given all the work Calhoun Falls now has with the principal project. But, but we definitely need to get talk to management in there. Either whether we replace the board or replace some of the board or, you know, get another PSD on board. Well, just let us know whenever you have them in. We'll be glad to come in with a project update at the same time. That way everybody's on the same page and can make good decisions.
And I'll, I'll attend the conference calls that she has. And then when she sends out the notes, I'll forward them to everyone.
You guys think about a special meeting. We're already going to be meeting on the fourteenth. There are other things, one time have a special meeting that afternoon.
Would have to be that.
Like at noon or something?
Like at noon, yeah, or eleven.
Or one. How, how much time do we need to discuss that? Probably an hour, I would think would be sufficient, maybe a little longer. But we have a meeting starting at three at the park, so we'd have to get out here by two, thirty. I think that would be sufficient. I mean, if you brought during the line, you could get out.
Yeah.
I was going to try just a minute. One o'clock on the fourteenth. I'd love to know if you have the paperwork or not, pretty much first. I'll be glad, but. Okay, I'll give them here. So can we change our letter to advise the PSD that we have concerns about its management of the Armstrong Creek list the concerns that John just put out and tell them we would like to meet with them on the fourteenth at one? Here, it's going to go to the PSD, right, and PSD? PSD, yeah. Word. And that. And if they don't attend, I'm, I'm going to take that as, you know, them checking out.
Somebody should be here today.
Yeah, they were, John, John notified them. Remember, notified on Monday.
Yeah. Actually, we're doing.
So, so we're going to have a special meeting that day. So I'm just going to move that we postpone this matter till the fourteenth at one.
Sure.
All those in favor?
And do we have to motion the letter?
Yeah, I move that we approve the letter, sending a letter to the PSD outlining our concerns and inviting them to meet with us or letting them know we're having a special meeting on second.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
You were looking at number two and that's what you said.
Oh, yeah, I was looking at number two. All right, well, number two is off.
Time for the sheriff.
Okay, there. Morning, Alan.
Sorry, she backed her sheriffing platform.
Capital school approval, which is the certification of everything, the public position, the public agency. Everyone suspended, bankruptcy, certified. It's just.
How's this land sale going to work now that everything's going to the state?
We, we. I talked to them yesterday. They don't have dates set up or stuff, but they went anywhere, but they've not called the courthouse or set up a day. Like yesterday, they did their land sale, their, their part, they did Otter County, Greenberg County, Summers County, all one day. It's interesting, you don't really know how it's going to work yet. The biggest thing is they don't, you know, where we used to put stuff out on newspapers, that's all I'm in now. And they want to post it on the west side. It was in column, it's already down. But you know, I didn't know that, so. So, kind of people, they ask for them or something, and stuff that all the state public officers. It really shortens the time of what it does. So basically, when we done, but they'll have one. I'll put stuff down and see what they.
Yeah, I'm covering states with the book. I'm going to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
The, the sign us for Juanita's resignation too, that I already.
I don't think, we never do anything for, to accept their resignation. That was just the copy that you should have signed with the letter. That's just your copy in your agenda, because it's on wallpaper.
I read one, I read this.
Yeah, yeah.
So my name is Diane Paulson. I do serve as the director of the Fayette County Family Resource Network and I currently serve as coordinator for Fayette County Teen Court, which we will be discussing today. For those of you who don't know, Teen Court, as the name suggests, the court for teenagers. When we say teenagers, we mean seventh through twelfth graders. So when a student is in trouble, the highest target we guarantee would be a misdemeanor, so like shoplifting, vandalism, but we could hear anything underneath that, maybe like truth from the principal class in cases this year. The other big difference with Teen Court is our youth volunteers. So when we have a teen court hearing, all of the court rules are filled by those teenagers. So it's all in peers. So there's the teenage defense attorney, teenage prosecuting attorney, teenage clerk, teenage bailiff, and our teenage jury. The only adult who serves in the teen court hearing is our judge. Our jury does not determine guilt or innocence. We can't force any student in trouble in the teen court. They choose to participate. And so what that jury does decides what steps can. Uh, and so what that jury does decides what steps can that student who's in trouble take. Make up for their actions and to hopefully process, not get in trouble again. Um, some requirements of someone who is in trouble comes through Team Court would be completed with service. Um, one of sixteen and a maximum of forty hours. Uh, and then coming back and serving on the Team Court jury, uh, so they are part of a jury, maybe this is another student who's in trouble. Uh, but they could also be asked to do an essay, an apology letter, or attend any prevention or education classes at the youth reporting center. Uh. And if the student who's in trouble, um, completes Team Court, uh, then their charge, their offense is not held against them moving forward. Uh, if they don't complete Team Court, uh, either in the timeframe given, or they kind of participate from the very beginning, that's their right to do so. Uh, then they just get the traditional punishment, whether that's a ticket, speeding ticket, or a ticket for having. A vape on you at school, or any kind of traditional discipline that students would get. That is a very, very brief, long version of Team Court. Uh, but what we are here to present to you mainly is that we have successfully completed one year of having Team Court. Um, so what we've been looking at is a July to June date for our data, which follows the FPRN. Which the FPRN is the official agent for this program. Um, so just very briefly, the infographic you have in front of you details that year of July twenty one to June twenty twenty two. Um, during that year, we did have seventeen juveniles have hearings in Team Court, and as you can see, a hundred percent of our offenses were juveniles in possession of tobacco. In conjunction with tobacco on school property, so when a student has a vape at school, it's actually two charges. Because they are minor possession of tobacco and then they have tobacco on school property, which is also not allowed.
So, so vape counts as two counts?
If you have it in possession at school, yes, it does. Uh, so though, that was a hundred percent of the hearings we heard during this timeframe. Uh, all seventeen of those juvenile were in Team Court for that reason, having a big.
See, back when I was going to school, it would have been like stuff. I mean, they had bottles in classrooms and they'd spit them. That was when Noah was a baby, so.
Uh, further down, you can see where we have our youth volunteers, so throughout the year, we had thirty six youth volunteers attend at least one Team Court event. With an average of twelve attending each month. Uh, we do have to have ten youth to even have a hearing, so that's one defense attorney, one prosecuting attorney, and eight jury members. Without those ten, we aren't even eligible for Team Court hearing. Uh, and then towards the right, you can kind of see how the schools are broken down by youth volunteers. There is one small slice of the pie next to, between Meadowbridge and Fayetteville that would not show, those were homeschool students. We had two of them last year, so we can take homeschool students as youth volunteers, we cannot take homeschool students for juvenile offenders. So you can see that Oak Hill High School had the largest youth volunteers last year with that. At least in the one event. And then towards the middle of the infographic, starting on the left, you can see referrals versus hearing, so. A referral to the Team Court does not equate to made hearing, and that is for many reasons, the first. If the juvenile does not want to participate, we get a referral from the school or a law enforcement officer, I explain the program during intake and they don't want to participate, which is in their right to do so. Um, so that's the first way a referral won't go to a hearing, the second way is we have a review committee, which is made up of adults. Uh, it's made up of myself, um, Judge Ewing, someone from the Board of Ed, someone from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, someone from the Sheriff's Office. Someone from the Youth Reporting Center, and someone from probation. We look at all the referrals once the student says, yes, I want to participate. And as a picture, we look at that student. We look at their history with the Board of Ed, with the Reporting Center, and we see if they're eligible, because this is very early intervention. So we have a frequent repeat offender, uh, for whatever offense is, um. We can maybe determine if they would not. Uh, benefit from the program, so that committee has rejected students. Um, based on previous history. Um, so that's the second way that a referral won't go to a hearing, but you can see, I know the numbers aren't there. Um, which schools were referring, um, which schools in the green actually had a hearing, and then of the green, which completed. Um, so we do have several schools in the county that did not send any referrals last year. And we did have Oak Hill High School who sent referrals, but did not make it to a hearing, so the only schools that had hearings were middle trail high school students from Meadowbridge.
I mean, wonder what Meadowbridge is doing differently, because it has more completions.
They do. Um, only one student that was referred last year from Meadowbridge did not complete, and that's because he did not show to his hearing. And which is an immediate disqualification and removal from the program.
Sounds like there's some follow up going on at the school.
So every student that actually had a hearing completed.
So the the three, the valley, Fayetteville, and Oak Hill, those were all the middles.
Yes.
All right, and then. Does someone follow up with them again later on, maybe four or five months later, and just to check on them to see how they're doing?
We're, we're.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, uh, so in the very middle of the infographic, you can see our completion rate, so at the time of this infographic, eight juveniles of the seventeen successfully completed. There were three juveniles still in process when we made this, but I checked this morning, those three didn't complete. Uh, so that bumps that number up to eleven. So eleven out of seventeen successfully completed Team Court last year. Uh, and then towards the very right, you can see um educational experiences with the youth volunteers, so not only do we meet with them once a month at a Team Court hearing. But we try to engage them elsewhere. Uh, they are very serious, we have Team Court hearings, as they should be, but we try to have fun with them and get to know them as youth volunteers. Um, so there are some listed there, for you to see, we also did present two scholarships to graduating seniors, which totaled fifteen hundred dollars last year. And we intend to do that again. Uh, together. One was a word of a thousand and one was a word five hundred, there was an application, they wrote an essay. Around Team Court, uh, and then our group recorded that money. Uh, further down, you can see community service hours, so our volunteers get hours when they participate in Team Court hearings or any extra perpoo activities. So of our youth volunteers, we totaled five hundred eighty three hours for them, that they could document towards their college or their schools. Um, and then the juveniles, um, of course, we only did the eight that had completed by the time this was made. But they do have to complete community service as well as part of their disposition, so of those eight, we had a total of a hundred and twenty five community service hours. And we try, as best we can, for the students to complete community service, um, in their area where they live. Uh, we don't let someone from Meadowbridge having to drive all the way to Fayetteville to do their community service hours, we try to do it where they live locally.
Okay, so are these community service hours, can they use those to count toward graduation?
As far as I know, there is no requirement to graduate community service anymore, but yes, they can if there was.
Okay.
Further down, you can see volunteer evaluation, so after every hearing, we ask for youth volunteers to complete an evaluation. We want to know what they think about Team Court and how the hearing went. Um, it's fairly simple, it's the same questions every time, uh, but as you can see, some of the questions are, if the case is handled fairly. If they think that they're making better choices than their lives when they're just paying Team Court, and if their knowledge of the court system and law hasn't improved. Um, and we obviously have more questions than that, but we want to know how our youth volunteers feel about the program and how we can make it better. And then to your question, John, uh, the last box on the right is follow up data, so when a juvenile successfully completes Team Court, we do check up on them. Um, I check up on their grades, their attendance, and their discipline for two years, so I do one month, three months, six months, and a year. With the schools, uh, and then when this was made, five out of the eight juveniles did not have any discipline reports to report on. So, some did, obviously, but five out of eight, I don't think this.
That's true.
And obviously, we can dive deeper into the follow up data with actual grades. But the premise of Team Court is when a peer jury decides what your consequence should be. Um, there's likely to be a repeat offender, so that's why we wanted to highlight specifically discipline with this. And that's.
Have you met with the uh Board of Education? Talk to them about, I think this is success.
They participated, the board and.
Okay, I heard that part.
So, so originally, we were supposed to present last night, um, but the Board of Ed advised, um, like a working session to go over this as, instead of a presentation. Um, so I do not know, then, we had a date, but it's been moved, so I believe. In the begin, early beginning of the new year, we will sit down, myself, the judge, and all the board members, talk about our data. Show that as of right now, and hopefully, it needs to be effective, and um, how the board can partner with us.
That's gonna happen, I'd like to go to that. Input.
I hope for you to be there, have your input. But anyways.
Can I ask a question?
No, but you.
The uh, legislature request to screen board and develop a educational diversion program in twenty fifteen, build a set. We have never implemented that, it's always difficult as a prosecutor to do that, because a lot of times it's not malicious, it's just. Imperity and and that kind of stuff. You mentioned that there's educational programs, they're intending to Team Court, develop a program, we can not, not, not hurt these kids. Help with somebody, so they're not in juvenile children's case, I mean, we, I mean, the legislature requested that seven years ago. And it seems like we gotta affect the Team Court operating. That would be a natural addition to that, and it is always difficult to talk to parents and kids about that, I, I. It's difficult in our role to be the one to do that.
Uh, a question for you, if someone were to go all through the court system with a. Charge like that, would it be considered a misdemeanor or would you hire?
Well, it, it, the code says they can participate in a, in a, what's called an educational diversion program.
Okay.
Now, you mentioned that you guys have set up educational programs.
We partner with the Youth Reporting Center, so they provide all of our education if the jury. Asks a juvenile to complete any education based on their offense. So depending on what the Youth Reporting Center could offer, I can see that partnership happening, but.
You mentioned that's been a gap for seven years, so I mean, I just.
Yeah, that's a good point, and in fact, you know, we've all been desperate, everybody participates to find other than vaping. Issues to handle on Team Court, has it just?
I will say, when I come back next year, you will not have a hundred percent vaping, we already had some different cases this year. Um, but yes, vaping seemed to be our bread and butter for a while.
I wanted to add a couple of things, and Wes, I will, Chuck Taylor is the head of Youth Reporting Center, and he could probably come up with some programming for that. I'm happy to work with you on that, but um, other things that I wanted to point out, since I'm, I'm an attorney mentor for that, that I think are good. For the program. Well, one thing is, a lot of people don't know that the schools don't have to necessarily be the people referring the kids to these programs. If a child shoplifts at Walmart or something like that, Walmart could refer the child to the program, law enforcement can refer the child to the program. Um, and and then law enforcement could work with the prosecutor to defer, you know, filing charges. If the child can put the program, and same with the business owners. So it's, it's, it's a program that's not just based in school referrals. Um, and because it's early intervention, the fact that there's not a lot of middle school participation is troublesome to me.
Which I can say that will surprise the priest this year.
Okay.
Have a working.
Know we have at least one.
With Oak Hill Middle School this year, yeah. So they have participated this year.
Um, but um, another thing is, it doesn't just benefit the kids who were in trouble. There are a lot of volunteer kids who haven't been in trouble, who are participating in these juries, and they're the attorney. They're getting public speaking skills, organizational skills, they have, they have hands on time for a couple hours a month with. Um, well, about three hours a month with Diane and other, and Katie and other adults who work with.
Other adults.
Yeah, there are a lot of people in here, I see that are involved in Team Court. Um, the mentor attorneys, Judge Ewing, like they, they, we all know them by face and name, we see them in the community. You know, so it, so it provides, it's a, it's, it's a much, has a much broader benefit than just a diversion for missing. You know, you know, delinquents. Um, the other thing is, I was just thinking of a couple examples of the types of services that Youth Reporting has been offering, tobacco cessation. Uh, a, a key one in these vaping cases, so a lot of times these kids will. Send them to tobacco cessation class, they have to do community service, they often have to write apology letters. Then they tell them they have to keep their grades up and their attendance up, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that comes in. And they, we do draw out in that class whether they're going to school, whether they have good grades, and that's where things, the little defense attorneys want something to. To be able to argue, well, they, this is a good kid, this is a good student, you know, so. Um, and and then it kind of gives us some input, you know, that we can feedback, that we can give back to Department of Education, you know, we, we might have trouble kid here. We've had some parents come in and, you know, act like they didn't do anything wrong as they're, you know, judging the first city up on the stand, you know, no, I don't smoke, you know, and. Um, don't want to take responsibility for managing their child, but then, you know, you get them in there and they're defensive. And now we know kind of what we're dealing with, and so, and so it has been, to me. Has a lot more benefits than just a diversion program. That's my view, but anyway, um. So if you would please let me know when the Department of Education. Um, meeting will be, I would love to be there. Just have me one question.
No, no, I mean, it's, it's a great program, I like it.
It really is, I think, I think it's too great, you should, you guys should come and watch these kids someday, I mean, it's, it's pretty, they're getting really good, these little attorneys. Couple of them, I'm, I think are gonna actually be attorneys at some point.
Commissioner, just like you know, just, um, he would say not talk to myself, and we had a meeting with the chief, so I guess it was just making up about the team board. He can rely a lot, so just let you know that happened to that.
To try to increase our referrals, um, from law enforcement.
All I knew you when I talked with Chuck about the sex that Wes raised.
Okay.
Something, Wes, I'm glad you did that, because that's been an issue, that, that might be an avenue where we can do it.
Yeah, it's forty nine, four, seven, seventeen. You know, it's the record by the legislature to do this, it's. Details out of the house.
Sweet, thanks, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks.
Good job, girl.
Okay.
All right, farmland protection, I wasn't too late, guys. Got you, got you in here.
So, it should be sweet. We need permission from the commission to proceed with a purchase of an easement on the McClintock Farm in Swinburne.
You did a proposed, I think last time you was in there is do a study.
No, no, they applied.
Oh, okay.
And so, before we start spending money. The county commission has to give us an approval that they won't object. After you've spent money to selling us an easement.
Do we have a map of the. From property, did you guys ever buy that last time?
Yeah. Are you, are you doing the entire property or?
They, she applied, uh, for the entire property, but the farming board is only gonna pursue at this point. Um, out of the six hundred acres, a hundred and some acres, I think, it's mostly the prime farm.
And that was, because that was the best farmland?
Right.
The six hundred?
Yeah.
Mostly forested. It also is continuous to other family property that's already in easement, so. The benefit of building out that easement over time by having other farms adjacent join. Is a great way to just keep that whole area farmland. That's quite a single benefit, one of the benefits.
You have any comments? Do you have any comment?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna move we approve it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay, and then as regards to the other two applicants, we have in our dock. Um, the Jarrett Farm. And the Rogers Farm, which are much smaller there at Heiko, we looked at them before, they've been in the docket for. Over two years now. Um, will you give us some approval to proceed with purchasing an easement on those?
I thought we had approved Jarrett, but not Rogers, is that not?
I thought we approved the study or the, or something beforehand, but it's been a while.
Yeah, not that I know of.
Okay.
I, we just don't want to spend, we have to still negotiate prices, get appraisals, surveys. That's money that we spend, that we won't get back.
Um, I'm. Pretty sure that we did Jarrett.
Thought we did too.
I can't remember Rogers.
We're just looking, not, we didn't Rogers, because Rogers was the one in that area, we're concerned about easement, wasn't it?
See, I thought Rogers was done a long time ago, I suppose.
Didn't do Sparks, for the concern.
That, that, because Sparks agreed to an easement.
Correct.
Right, right.
And we went forward from that, and now we've done.
Right.
And Jared and, and Rogers are small parcels, but they have joined, so once again, you have the benefit of gaining.
Ruth is checking, I thought we had already approved those.
Okay.
So keep checking right now, if we haven't, what we'll do is we'll notice them on our supplemental meeting next week.
And we'll, we'll make a decision on that.
Let's see, I hate to do that.
They're just, they're out toward the end of Lower Dawson Bridge Road uh, above the Meadow River park boundary. So.
I put this one with those two.
Yeah, and that's been.
Yeah, some months.
Yeah, quite a few months ago.
Well, probably if it came up, it would have been a year ago, probably.
Let me say that right when we started on the week.
And I just wanted to make sure that the board can proceed with all this work. We need to get some you know, the landowners want this. It's their property. They want to sign up an easement. We need to proceed with purchasing easements if we can come to an agreement.
Yeah, but we're gonna research those two and then if we have it, they'll be on a special meeting for the fourteenth.
Right. Let's take a quick recess while we research it and, and we'll try to get you some information before we reconvene here.
It's not in the minutes.
It's not in the minutes. I swear when you prove them.
Yeah, because I think you and Randy came in and presented it.
Yeah, we might have, but it might have been overshadowed by the five hours. Sparks season.
It was approved. It wasn't. No, it's not in the minutes that it was approved. And everything talks about human preference to producing farms.
What date is that? I bet we have a YouTube one. We could just amend the minutes if it's.
December fifteenth, twenty one. Did you look in twenty two, Amy, or when you look?
Um, I was looking for the maps. Okay. In, in March. Well, I'm gonna call a recess right now because I'm sure somebody has to go. And um, we'll reconvene at ten.
Thank you.
Well, I knew we'd been held hostage for an hour, so.
He can sit and look in his eye.
It's coming on fall of the paint. During the health in training, my husband's in that.
I needed a year for that one. Um.
I doubt even, I mean, I'd be asking, but I'm about moving myself in the first.
What about my cap? What about Mike Callahan?
Can you see Tom?
Yeah, we're back on the records. Um.
Okay.
Terry and Anita walked in, so we have Health Department here. I, I mean, I'm in the loop on all of this, and I know they are in the loop, but. And while you guys do that, I'm gonna move on to the appointment to fill in vacancy on New River Gorge. Energy RDA term expiring June thirty, twenty twenty four. And what I can tell, we have only one applicant, and that is Joe Ray. This would be to replace Tom Oxley, who um resigned because he's kind of retiring and that sort of thing. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and recommend we approve Joe Ray uh, and appoint him to the Energy RDA.
Second.
All those in favor?
Bye.
And then we have a vacancy on solid waste authority. We have several actually, and we are very pleased to have an applicant, um, Kenneth Power. Look out. Was it here?
Yeah.
Oh, was that him?
Yeah, he's a former worker D E P.
Oh, I saw him with his D E P shirt on. Um, anyway, uh, he's retired from D E P, so he knows what he's doing. He provided his C V. Rare. He worked in the inspection and enforcement office of mining and reclamation division. Policing surface and underground coal mines and gravel quarries. He seems well qualified. Um, and we need people on that board. I move that we approve his appointment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Which state is he from? Like, with Angela or Karen Hall?
Karen Hall.
The place he lives or Karen Hall and it would be in the.
It'd be Karen Hall where he lives.
Mike Callahan was on the call now. Okay. Hey, Mike, can you hear me? Okay.
Madam President.
Hey there.
Madam President, Mike Callahan, I'm here.
Hey, um, I don't want to get into like the, the legal strategy or anything, but, but I wanted just to update the other commissioners. I have um, Anita Stewart and Terry Harland from the Health Department here. Um, and just to, to let everybody know what's going on with regard to additional testing and, and with our mitigation efforts so far on that um, Paint Creek, because I, I understand there have been citizens complaining and concerned that it hadn't been fully mitigated up there.
Yeah, would you like, would you like me to explain the current legal status?
Yeah, you can explain that too. Anything that's not privileged, I think is fine.
Yeah, I, I can, I can give you a lot of information, non-attorney client privilege. Um, as the commissioners will recall, very shortly after the spill, um, you authorized me to take some action to mitigate the problems that occurred on Paint Creek. Uh, and, and that was a pretty broad marching order that, that I got from the commission of go do what you can to fix it and help the county recover its expenses or costs that it may have incurred in that, if that's possible. So what I did was I, I got with the expert witness, Dr. Scott Simonton, that you all have met and seen around a good bit. Um, we came up with a bit of a game plan and kind of studied on what the, the spill was, the, that, that hit the creek and how it impacted things. From there, we filed a suit in the Circuit Court of Fat County seeking um, what, what I was directed to seek, which is what needs to be done to clean it up, if anything. Um, and we, we call that, the term of art is a remedial investigation. Or a lot of times y'all have heard me say R I, which basically means go out there and study and determine what needs to be done, if anything. So the results of the R I will determine what um, needs to be done, if anything, to address the environmental impact to get it up to an acceptable environmental and health-based standard. So that was what you directed me to do. I, I had filed that. I filed that in the Circuit Court of Fat County. Uh, it was assigned to Judge Blake. Um, the, the company has insurance, the G G West is the kind, the way I refer to them. They've got insurance coverage council. Uh, Spillman Thomas is the law firm. Spillman Thomas removed that case to the um, federal court. So our case is currently pending in front of Judge Irene Berger in the federal court in Charleston. So we're kind of at the initial stages of that where we're doing our typical disclosures and, you know, here's what we think, here's what the witnesses might say. Uh, so it's kind of just getting its start there. Um, I have been in touch with the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection. Uh, and they've advised me at this stage, they're continuing to pursue their administrative remedies to do whatever they want to do to address the problem from their standpoint. Um, also, um, I've been in contact with counsel for the uh, Canal County Commission. Um, it's Isaac Foreman, uh, with the firm of Hissem Foreman Donovan, I believe, out of Charleston. Um, he told me they were gonna file their case in Canal County. He expected that the uh, insurance coverage council would do the same thing to his case, which would be removed, but um, I have not had any further communications to determine the status of that, but, but I will figure that out relatively soon to determine where we are on that. So that is where the, the county commission is with respect to procedure on the legal case. And again, it's pending now. Um, and, and so that, that, that's where we're at. That's my best summary I can give you.
Okay, so with regard, so the question has been whether we need additional um, testing of the water up there. Do you have any feedback on that?
Yeah, let, let me say this, and, and um, Dr. Stewart was kind enough to send me an email with, you know, some of her thoughts. Uh, with respect to well testing, whether that needs to be done or not, that is really not my bailiwick, and I would not proclaim to be a doctor and know whether that needs to be done or not. I would certainly rely on her expertise. Uh, with respect to testing for impacts to the environment itself, that is more of the bailiwick of me and Dr. Simonton to determine what needs to be done to remediate. In other words, um, how much of the chemical is still on the banks? How much of the chemical is in the creeks? Um, how much of it is going to seep out as the water comes up and down? Uh, what needs to be done to mitigate that? Again, if anything. So, so my prong on it, and again, I would certainly rely on Dr. Stewart or others in the health field. But, but what, and, and whatever they tell me, I can certainly incorporate into our case and address their concerns, but the, the goals that, that I have are, are really twofold. Number one, um, i- is cost recovery. In other words, the county should be able to recover its expenses to deal with this problem, because certainly it was not the county's fault. Um, you all got polluted on by someone else through no fault of your own. So you all should not bear the burden financially of that. And secondly, to do the R I, the remedial investigation paid for by the other side to determine what, if anything, needs to be done as far as remediation. Um, and, and or mitigation efforts to, to minimize the damage that this is gonna be causing as it goes on. So that, that is the direction that I'm going. Um, and again, with your all's guidance, I'll certainly try and stick within those parameters.
Well, and if we do have to do additional testing, wouldn't the cost of those testing, that testing be included in any damages claim we file?
That's correct. Uh, generally speaking, in environmental cases, um, that, there, there are multiple statutes, both federal and state. And, and, you know, you all are fortunate enough to have the best ordinance uh, in the state of West Virginia for your cost recovery. So anything that the county incurs, be it testing, uh, via overtime or, you know, time spent by deputy sheriffs, um, you know, any um, entity within the county that expended time directing traffic, um, pulling samples, whatever those expenses were, um, we certainly add those up as damages in the case. So if the county decides to expend, uh, county funds, general revenue, or whatever funds you all have to, to do additional testing, that would be an element of damages I would include in the lawsuit in federal court.
All right, um, Dr. Stewart, do we need to do additional testing?
Have you received complaints since we've done the testing?
Other than the one individual who reached out in the last couple of weeks, I think. Um, after the one that you guys have been in contact with up there, asked for water? No.
Um, that person typically does speak for the group. Um, he's part of the Water Association, so he has kind of pointed contact. So I would, if he's asking for support, then I would consider that toward the community as a whole. Um, and what I do know is that um, I received notification yesterday from B H H R asking if we were doing testing. And if we received the letter from the Canal County Commission, if our commission had received that letter and that they were willing to do that testing, but had not heard about from our committee. So I think that certainly deciding if we're testing or not, and who's paying for that and who's not, if that happens, is important information um, for you guys to decide. Um, I think that if there's concerns from citizens, you know, we don't, we do not permit hand wells. We cannot say that they're safe or unsafe um, regardless of a hazardous waste spill. Um, we have sampled them using testing from inspect, which is, which is the manufacturer of infant. But there's concern like, is there secondary interest related to that? The testing that's being developed right now, being carbide, will incur cost based on sample. Each sample will be X amount of dollars. I don't know those numbers yet. Um, there was a party being needed today regarding the details, and that's been pushed again during the fourth week in a row, and I've gotten out of the week. As they're developing, they have to create a whole new task to do that sample. So I think it's something that the commission, I think there's seventeen, this is Amanda Scott. She's our, our lead environmental specialist. There's seventeen wells in Fayette, correct? And this. So the majority of the wells are in Fayette, so thinking about um, that and thinking about um, if that's necessary, it is important to decide.
Okay, uh, Kevin. Kevin's on the call, I understand.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
What are you hearing about um, requests for additional testing?
Um, I've had no request other than the gentleman that you have, that we spoke of just now. Uh, he is the one that speaks for the majority of that area. He's the uh, I think, sub-chair of the Water Shed Association down there. Uh, he's the one that stated that he would reach out to the county commission and voice his concern there. Other than that, there's no one else has voiced their concern to us when we're delivering water other than him.
He hasn't reached out to the county commission to my knowledge. He's only reached out to Kevin. Nobody but Canal County Commission has reached out to the Fat County Commission, and they did it several weeks after they knew there was a problem. So um.
That gentleman did call the Health Department last week, and we encouraged them, or maybe it was two. But we encouraged them to make a formal, express formal concerns to our county administrator and, and or the county commission, so it was documented.
Yeah, and, and, and I think that's right. It was, I think it was around last week because you let me know, and um, we had had before that had had nobody communicating with Fayette County whatsoever until Canal County sent its its letter about how it was gonna test wells where we had all the wells in our county that probably needed to be tested. So, um, Kevin, do you have any idea what the cost of any of that is? Do we know what it costs the first time we tested?
Did you say D H H R would pay for it?
No.
They said no, okay.
So D H H R helped to organize and do the.
Okay, okay.
Uh, and we were barred by Secretary Crouch to do so on a local level, uh, in a state and a local level. Um, and we submitted our findings and um, from the company that there was nothing to test. To zero point three percent uh, concentration of the impotent product was not detected in any of the same. We want to make sure that that's what the testing has been done to that level. Um, the subsequent testing, the cost will, will be incurred from not only the development of that test, but also the individual sampling per test. The heat well will be a certain fee as envisioned.
Is it, does the test have to be developed because of the uniqueness of the chemical?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Wouldn't that take, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a scientist. Never mind. I'm just gonna keep on that.
Go ahead. I wanna know.
Usually, usually it takes a while for that to get to well from one area to another, correct? I mean, there's sequence that has to occur before the action that comes into the well, is it not? Or is it a time period, or sometimes stuff cannot happen overnight unless it's flowing right into a well itself, moving through the ground. That, I'm. It was ten, twenty feet from the tree? Some of the wells? Okay, I didn't know that was that close to the creek. Okay.
They're right on Paint Creek. It's right on.
Okay.
Of all those houses.
Upstream or downstream? Upstream or downstream, or?
It's downstream of the spill, downstream of the spill. So Skidder Creek comes in, and then there's the community of return off maintenance, obviously. And their concerns that, that we've heard is that there's continuing home, and every time it rains, that there's foam and on the ground, on the ground and the water.
Nothing was detected.
The first time.
Yeah, well, usually it'd probably still take time to get there, whether it's a week, two weeks, a month, or six years, you know? Just don't matter.
What test did we use to detect it the first time?
Inspec, so Inspec, the manufacturer of that product, um, did analysis using their sample. So they, you know, they have the standards standing with that product. And they, um, I don't know if it was, we, we asked it, what was the definition? That's some type of biochemical acid. To determine the levels of.
So the concern is that we not use their test again, that we develop our own tests and use our test to get more objective findings?
I think that was a concern, and I, I don't know that there was cooperation for repeat testing from the product manufacturer. I don't think that there was an opportunity for repeat testing.
When did they reschedule that meeting? You know, because I know it's supposed to be the day.
Um, next Wednesday at four thirty.
We're meeting on Wednesday at one. So I think we need to consider this decision once we get that information about. We could just let them know, I'm, you know, that we'd like them to not reschedule it again. So we need some information so we can make a decision here.
Are there certain things that you would like me to ask, um, the liaison with the, with the H H R before reconvening this week?
Cost, I'd like to know what the cost is going to be, um, and the scope, I mean, is, is that going to give us conclusive information? Or, you know, is it going to, are we going to require ongoing testing?
I, I think it's important that we have an endpoint, which we talked about with the initial testing. But I think that it would be very important and valuable from a public health standpoint to have an endpoint of, of mitigation. Maybe the county needs to help with that, um, we can certainly discuss that as well. But I think that's a key element.
Has there been any experience with this product to go anywhere else?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Go ahead, go ahead. Here, up.
There are only a handful of experts in cleaning up the spill in the factory. They had, we thought we were going to have to get somebody from the Midwest, I think, and then found somebody in Parkersburg or something, it was, it's not really random.
Yeah, the, the company, it took about six and a half hours to find a cleanup company for that spill. And before they would even come to clean it up, uh, the company had to put half the money upfront for them to even respond to clean up that material.
Would you, would you mind, um, coming up with a recommendation of an endpoint? I just don't know, or, or, um, talk like about it. Because I agree with you, I mean, I don't think we can keep on and on, I mean.
I, I suggest that the endpoint be our last test.
Well, and
That's my recommendation.
I thought that test was conclusive. I mean, that, that was when, when Canaan County brought all this up. You know, we had just gotten the results in for that test. And I didn't understand why there was a need. I still am not convinced there's a need for additional testing, but, um, you know, but I'm, I'm thinking logically and not emotionally. Um, but I, but I think that, you know, if, if they're concerned and they have all that, I mean, I think it's going to depend on, on what it's going to involve to do it.
And then also considering in that endpoint, water source?
Am I looking at?
Just returned email.
Are they going to hook up to West Virginia American Water with, have, either?
Mm-hmm.
Or they not, like, what's the community? So it's not all right.
Yeah, what are they going to do if there is an issue? If there is an issue, right?
They have an option, it sounds like. Um, I would say based on this, that for me, the endpoint would be once the testing is done, like, that's the end of it. We do an additional round of testing, that's that. Um, with regard to this spill, anyway. Just don't see how we can just keep going on and on.
The West
No, you guys.
So West Virginia American Water does supply water from that way?
West Virginia American Water is currently in the process of doing an extender project to that area. Um, it is not up and running yet, however, it should be within the next several months. Uh, it does stop right there in the little community of Collinwood. So there should be the ability to connect to, uh, that water once it is up and running, sir.
Does it run, does it, will it go by the seven wells along that creek?
The last pump house is actually right there in the center of that community, sir.
And you say we're done next two or three months?
My understanding, it should be done within the next couple of months.
Ending order. The extension will be completed, the, all the houses.
Where are they looking?
Where they can hook up to.
They have, didn't say they have to hook up with this water, or they have to?
They have to, but they might have been saying they would if it's because usually they go along with the houses, you know, they don't want the water. Do you know if any of them has, has requested, uh, to hook up?
Yeah.
When you, they do a study and they go out and check and see what, what?
Anyone has said that they want to call with that move up the threshold.
Okay, well, usually before an extension happens, the way it usually goes is they will survey to see how many houses would go ahead and, and, uh, hook up to the extension before the extension's even provided the cost. So evidently somebody has, or I think more than fifty percent of them has to say that, is that right, John?
Correct.
I'm just guessing. I think it's fifty-eight percent.
Okay.
So.
And I think as those discussions, because being there water, um, that's not really
But we can call, we can call them, we can talk to them, Ruth. And get them on the phone and ask them what, what some time period is to do an extension.
Commissioner. Yeah. We already have a line of communications with them established, and I can reach out to them and I'll get you an answer.
Yeah, it, it may be an urgency if, if you talk to them about it.
I'm actually going to email them right now while we're still on the call.
Right, thank you. Good.
Okay. I have a question, there's more to do. Um,
So I guess if, if there's anything you can find out about what the cost is going to be, that would just help inform our decision. But, and we'll get this information from West Virginia American Water and we'll address it on the 14th. We're having a special meeting at one to discuss the, actually, interestingly, the Armstrong Creek PSD, which has had a bunch of issues. That's what we have. And I am hopeful that this FEMA funding will help expedite fixing the raw sewage issue up Hamilton. That is what's
Except for finding the other three point seven five million PSD needs to match.
Other three point seven five.
Okay, that's the way it works. FEMA gives you seventy-five percent. So they need to come up with twenty-five percent, but FEMA also holds twenty-five percent anywhere from four to six years after the project's completed, and your contractors aren't going to wait that long.
Oh, so it'll eventually reimburse that last twenty-five percent, but it's
Yeah, in four to six years.
Like some in the state of West Virginia might be interested in something, it's prison.
That's why, that's what we've already sent, uh, on the conference calls, we've already sent the letters and everything, call to.
Right. All right, so I move that we go ahead and, um, postpone this to our special meeting on the fourteenth at one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you, lady, cover them in.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, or do you need me for anything else?
Nope, I don't think.
Let me look at this, but you're involved in so many things.
Campgrounds, any, maybe?
No, I don't think there's anything else.
Right, as soon as I get a response back from my, uh, West Virginia American Water contact, I'll forward it to everyone's email.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. And, um, see, we're already a little behind. You wanted to leave a collated ordinance, or do you want to start?
Doesn't make a difference, whichever one you want to do first.
I can knock the easy stuff out first.
Okay.
Um, Ruth, the letter to municipalities about nine one one center. This letter is basically to invite the municipalities to meet with us on twelve fourteen at six P M at the nine one one center um, to discuss the, um, cost around the nine one one center and services it provides, upgrades that we basically, in short, a lot of the things that Commissioner Lewis has presented at the last meeting, if anybody wants to watch YouTube about that. Um, and, and how the municipalities, if, and if so, how the municipalities might want to, um, contribute to that. But that's just to discuss that with them. So I move that we approve the letter inviting the municipalities to meet with us on the fourteenth.
Excellent.
All those in favor? Aye. I'll meet John on that second.
I was, I was like, sir.
Didn't want to commit. Um,
The nice thing would be that draft RV and campground zoning difference. Will there be a ZIM option for that? The one at the nine one one center or the Armstrong, the, the municipality?
Uh, yeah, I think we need that. Yeah. Absolutely. This, are we just looking at the proposed change to ordinance?
Yeah, it's a, I think, I was here, most large, pretty large, it's a planning commission. So what, yeah, I mean, that's just the draft that you guys want to meet on. And I basically took some of Raleigh County and some of Ansete and do it together. So, um, if you guys wanted the planning commission, basically you would make a motion today to present it to the planning commission for amendment to unified development code to add. And I put it in section, um, where, where the subdivision section is, because that's the only going to be spot I have, so. But that would figure out, mark through that ordinance or have Anthony mark through it.
The only issue I see in the data, the thirty day one, what if I have a site in an RV park, pretty big walls around, I hook my trailer up and then it's to the other side of the park?
Oh, no, we're going to do that.
What?
They'll do that.
Well, I think under the ordinance, with the, uh, under this proposal, it would be good.
Yeah, Raleigh County had thirty, Ansete had, I mean, so that's a clue, no?
I think they're going to do it, I mean, every, every campground plays that, they have a right to move. But I, I mean, I, I'm just bringing that to your attention, you gotta hear a paper that certainly you want to make any changes. And this isn't, this won't apply to people that have already, uh,
So, yeah, Mike Taylor, we already have the definition of non-conforming, and basically in layman's terms, any campground that was established prior to, if the plan efficient, the rest of it would be approved, basically any campground that was established would not have to follow those because it'd be grandfathered in. So we already have that definition of non-conforming, cannot work. So if anything that was established prior to whenever this does get adopted, if it gets adopted.
Did we decide thirty consecutive days or weren't? I thought we were talking about two.
I think, I think we let her grab other news.
I just, I mean, we can say, that's whatever your personal preference is, and the planning commission.
There's one in here about you, Mike. All campgrounds shall enter into a letter of understanding with Fayette County Sheriff's Department giving authority to patrol the grounds and enter grounds for law enforcement purposes. That work? I, I'm more in line with a two week.
I'm, 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 that's, you know, a flexible.
Fourteen days, I mean, I'm
Fourteen day, yeah.
Fourteen days.
Other than that, I think it looks good. Think you did a good job of putting together.
And the health department has a big long, and twenty-eight, I didn't get I'm helping bring all of it, but they have guidelines for like bathroom facilities that you can't have wild animals. So they already have a state code, but I didn't, that's what I was putting there, basically, they should have painted health department campground permit as part of all, and that way I didn't have to include all that.
Don't they have to anyway? Don't they have to anyway or not?
They should, I don't know how much the health department enforces the state code, but state code is very specific on how big the area has to be for RV, how many fire hoppers you have to be, and have anything else involved, all that. It's already a state code, so I felt that though, they already paid a permit from the health department, and it covers. It's over here, you can't have any wild animals, and a sick animal.
Like deer and squirrels, stuff like that.
And pet deer.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Getting a little squirrely with it. Oh, anybody, the visitor, they bring deer and squirrel.
Sits for dinner.
So
Well, and I feel like too, if, if they haven't complied with the health department and we learn that, then they'll be in, out of compliance with us, and
And they'll still have to go to the, and they still have to be approved, you know, that is in zone. But we don't have any guidelines, just RVs, and that's where they, so, this would give us a way to see that people are putting RVs in their front yard.
We're the government. You guys have any other comments or anything? I move that we go ahead and ask the planning commission to consider the, if I take for the U C.
So the wording of it, for whoever's taking that, is for the county commission to request the planning commission to amend the unified development.
Okay, so we request that the planning commission, I move that we request the planning commission amend the unified development code, she would include this. The unified development code, she include this R V park regulations.
Seconds.
All in favor? Okay, payroll changes, because we've got some executive sessions, so.
Payroll changes. Very straightforward. So basically. Yeah, I want to move you a bi-weekly. From semi-monthly, starting first of the year. It'll, it'll streamline everything, because right now it sounds like a vassal. Um, it'll streamline time sheets, people will know exactly what they're getting paid for, and like, don't feel like they are now. Um, instead of being paid current, it'll be one week in arrears. And we figured out a schedule so people aren't going to actually miss. So in reality, I think people are getting paid in arrears now, the way time sheets are submitted. But on paper, it says they're paid current. So now we're just gonna make it on paper, they're paid one week in arrear. Every few weeks, or every other Friday, we pay check. First one will be January thirteenth. It also set a specific schedule for tax payments to alleviate some of those headaches we've had in the past three years. So it also creates two, what they call benefit holidays.
We get two extra checks.
You do get, you get two months out of the year, there'll be three tax in that month, so the last check of that month, insurance won't come out. Retirement still comes out, but insurance doesn't. On that topic, I also want to change the dental deduction back to both pay tax. I have no idea why it was turning into one paycheck a month. Um, but every month, people are asking, why is my check different? Well, go, your dental came out. So I want to change that back to. And that's about the gist of it. And you know, wage and hour law says you have to keep on pay periods notice, so if y'all approve it today, we're gonna give a memo together and get it to everybody. With the new schedule, along with a, everybody will have the same kind of time sheet. And it has all your pay dates in it already, and if you use Excel instead of paper, it'll calculate everything for you. Um, if not, print it out right on it, I don't care.
Everybody should be, it will be. And savvy about it, yeah, but.
But most, I think, are, um. I think it'll be better, and then you know every other Friday you're getting paid. So.
Okay, so two significant things. One is that. From what you explained to us already, our current employees. When they resign, will have one. Weeks worth of pay coming to them.
An additional week, right? Depending on when they retire.
Whenever they leave.
Right.
Whenever they leave service, but new employees will not have that week in arrears.
Everybody will be a one week in arrears.
So everybody, so nobody, so.
So right now, when you get paid on the fifteenth, you're getting paid through the end of the day on the fifteenth. However, you submit it to the bank three days in advance, so you're basically estimating hours. If you don't work those days and you have no time, you're getting paid for it anyway, because it's already went to the bank. This way, so I think it would be. It ends on Sunday. You submit your time sheets on Monday, it'll be sent to the bank on Tuesday, and then. You actually know the hours work. That's not how it is now.
It's a mess.
It is a mess, and then I am not even gonna get into it.
So then I, I. Pay check is gonna cover what period?
It'll be December twenty fifth through January eighth. So technically, you're. Right, and technically, you're gonna get paid twice for the last week of December. Technically, within all reality, you don't think there was. Little one in arrears anyway, but you don't. It's just a hominid mess, you know?
Okay.
We're also mentioning, do the fact that the hour before the year is on the schedule. It doesn't jive with twice a month.
It doesn't, and nobody does anything insane right now. Like, and everybody that's a non-executive employee needs to submit a time sheet, and we track them, their hours. So even if you're set up salary, it's certainly not always salary.
And electives are still gonna be paid current.
Yeah, but that's the damage back there, you start position, so. Yes. I'll go over the whole thing. With you.
I mean, she told me what they were doing.
Oh, we talked about it.
This, that's not even the tip of the iceberg, but.
Hey, you think.
I've had them being positive.
You think that would be department head? Maybe?
Yeah, and also, we'll have every employee sign off that they received the notice. And that gives you your full pay period.
What does need to convene the wage and benefit review board, because all the electives are on that. Easier.
Well, send them wages, so anyway, you know.
Yeah. All right, well, I mean, I think you sound good. It makes sense.
And there's gonna be one.
Okay.
This is your for now.
I move that we approve. These changes and the policies that Ruth has laid out for payroll.
Well, certainly, one of them, too, we're actually gonna be paying the employees twice for the last two things, so. If you guys recall, when the state did this, switching from twice a month to every other week, there were lawsuits all over the place.
Because the state held money back.
Well, this, I think we're not holding money back, and people are gonna get paid twice at the same time period. That should eliminate the prospect of anybody complaining about the transition from twice a month to every other.
Right. Right, so they're not gonna get less money, and in fact, they're gonna get paid.
Yeah, because when they.
That weekend arrears.
When people leave, they get paid the next week, when they work it out. Normally, so it doesn't catch up to you until they leave, really.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay, so ten, eleven. Our executive session, fourteen is executive session. What about twelve? We have to deliver control.
We gotta figure out a media guess. Right now, he's driving the department, that little money, so you finally know it's out there. So he can't call crowds, she can't do anything. I guess it's all a waste of truck. I don't know what's wrong with that. Yes.
Mr. Richard, I talked, um, where I pulled out, one of the officers out of your task force, but it's not even the time. I purchased a vehicle with, um. Asset forfeiture money or, I don't remember which one, one or two dollars, I mean, that I have over there. And we got a, uh, extra truck. Um, I told Rich for the time being, because I'm, I'm telling him, you get a trust with the junk, got a new time job, came out several times we talked. Um, I'm willing. Let him use it. It's a kind of vehicle, I mean. That couple of money, um, just for the time being, but I called and checked on it, and it's in the shop. The four were dropped out, and something else was out, so Wayne person let me know what's wrong with that, but it's, it's not marked. You know, one of our recovery vehicles that, um, we, so I'm willing to direct the help commission out, help him out, because it's like you said, he's gonna be.
Okay, well, that'd be awesome.
Just, you know, we figure out. What you can do.
Okay.
So there's like friends.
Get some magnetized signs or something to put on it, though. Yeah, just something to identify, so we park in front of people's songs.
And I think, yeah, that would be a good point out, we'll figure out.
And I let Rick know this, too, one of the decisions, you know, if anybody asks. I can, I mean. What y'all know, after I've been preaching back to people, it's hard to get anything right now, but we have some contacts that I could help. We could go come and get some more vehicles, so.
Move about two usually, because that was the nine one one center.
Two or one? Talk about there were one.
I think it should be.
And I understand, and the, the federal one, that's also, you know, the law, the spot, and all of them, what they want to say.
We found applications to meet to buy from the federal surplus, not just states. The state doesn't have anything right now, but Kevin's checking on the federal, too.
They lot over my, so I should do that, mission, but it's gonna be bad.
Okay, so it sounds like a plan.
Yeah, we have a plan.
The signs are gonna obviously be less than under your spending quarters.
Right.
Do that. All right, um. Then we have the dilapidated ordinance.
Do you want to do that now or after the executive session?
Um, we have executive session on three things, so I usually like to keep that at the end of it.
Okay. Angela, you ready?
Wait one minute, I'm here.
You got your, uh, the letters? Hey, good. Now, one of those goes to Anthony. So she's gonna have to do a little bit of work. Here, here, Angela.
You want these? For the share, that's the limit.
Did you already send it to him?
No, not yet.
Oh, okay.
I was waiting.
I have my copy here.
You want the fifth probably bigger room, or?
Yeah, give Anthony one and Bruce one. Okay, so Angela and I have been working on, um. Dilapidated and abandoned structures for quite some time. Um, this is actually the first year that we've had money budgeted. Uh, so that we could go out and attack some of these homes. Um, currently, we have a hundred and fifty documented. There's over four hundred in the county. Just safely guessing, uh, Angela and I talked about that this morning. We need to have a place to, to put photos. And the address of the property and the owner's name on our county website. So that, uh, people with multiple properties can be exposed because they're just letting them go. Like to give these people thirty days to get a letter with one of four options. Number one. Repair the structure, making it safe for family living or business use, clean the property, and do it within ninety days. Of being served later. Uh, two, have the structure demolished and hauled to the landfill. The owner's responsibility. Number three. Have the county place a lien on the property for the cost of demolition. And having it hauled to the landfill, the property owner then would make monthly payments to the county. For the total cost. Once the loan has been paid off, then the lien will be removed. I'd also like to add. Possible placing the lien on all their properties. So that nothing can be moved until they make the payment to pay off the lien. And, uh.
If the judgment, if we obtain a judgment against the property owner, the property's name, that can be reported abstracted, judge, it automatically attaches as they need to. Now, if it's a consensual agreement. They would, the property owner would have to agree to let us place a lien on their body. If we end up in court, we file suit to get reimbursed for the expenses, and then you get a judgment, then you could record the abstract, and it will automatically attach to real estate if they account. And if I may suggest another, this is something we did in some others, we gave property owners the option of. Paying the property to the city and making it the city's problem, and it would be supervised. You know, it, it seems somewhat counterintuitive, but when you consider that sometimes the land itself is worth less than what the cost of demolition and disposal is going to be. And people just didn't want to fool with it. They didn't have any vested interest in the property, and they ended up signing a deed to pay the property for the city, and then at that point, the city. Went in, cleaned it up, and then turned it around and sold the property, so that, that would be another option I would encourage the county to utilize. Because I, I think we probably would get property owners that, if they do a cost benefit analysis, they very well may decide to do that.
Yeah, that was number four. Sign the property over to county, and we will take care of it. That's okay. Um, I, I think I was at that meeting that you did down Smithers that time, and, and we had a lot of people coming in. These structures are not in bad shape to be turned into great start homes or businesses with affordable prices once rehabbed. The structures are too far gone. We could sell the property for all associated costs involved with removing the structure. Um, and then we need afforded housing, so this could be an example that we could use. It, it's just something I think that, that we've let go because of funding. We have a little bit of funding now, and it could do like ten to fifteen houses. Um, even though the budget is set for a hundred thousand dollars, there's still just a lot of expense with removing a home if they, uh, decide to do that. If we, according to some sheet that I created. If we would do this for four years, the fund would keep refunding itself, and we wouldn't have to worry about putting budgeted money into. Because as the payments were coming in, we could just recirculate those payments. And it would help build up to dilapidated fund. Angela's letter that she has been sending out for the, from the beautification committee is very similar, and she doesn't think that we would have to make any major adjustments.
Not to the ordinance. I mean, I think the signing over the property, um, so basically what happens different than the city is. We sent out two letters, and those are the symbols that were from years ago, um, the attorney, but we sent those letters out. If we don't get any response. Then I will get on your guys' agenda, show you guys the house, and then you determine if you agree with the committee. You send Anthony's office, since, uh, basically, they have so many days to give them your agenda. And then you guys, once the property owner is actually here, standing in front, you guys can give them that option of signing the property over. I don't think it needs to be in the ordinance. Anthony, did you guys put it in the ordinance, or was it just something that was discussed? Okay, back there.
As far as what?
The sign of property, but that wasn't in your ordinance, that was just.
No, that's not, it's not in the ordinance, and I mean, at the end of the day, if you can't have a property owner.
So it would just be an option when they're out here.
I mean, the way it was presented, the property owners were simply. You know, you need to do a comparison of what it's going to cost to remove the structure, tear it down, dispose of it, repair that to what, and delay this work. And if not, I mean, the reality is, is if you got a parcel of land that's worth five thousand, that's gonna cost twelve thousand to get rid of the building on it, it's probably not worth your life, but.
I got an idea. I just, I just had a brainstorm. It's probably not a good idea. Doesn't come from me, but it, it, I'm thinking outside the box. You're saying these dilapidated houses. They're tore down, the houses can be built there, the people that wants to build here, make.
If, um, yeah, if you have a dilapidated house, and whether the county tears it down or not, but we won't own it if the property owner doesn't.
What is, what criteria is considered dilapidated building?
So that's what our committee, that's why we have five members, I mean.
Is there studies on the house, the structure?
The ordinance has definition.
It just says that it is unsafe, which could be a busted window, a roof. I mean, most of the houses we have will be on, I mean, the rules take.
Do you think the property owners know that?
Most of them do. Most of them are out of state. They just pay a hundred dollars a year.
Think they want to sell the property or they want to keep it?
Most of the ones that I've worked with, and spoke here, if I've been here, want to keep it.
Keep it for what?
I don't know. Grandma, it was grandma's house. They don't look at it, so they don't care. They just pay the hundred dollars a year taxes and go on with their day.
I would like the ultimate here in Fayetteville, that they just, they don't, they want an exorbitant amount of money for it. And they live out of state, so they don't care if it just falls down.
So do we got to send a letter to them prior to initiating anything?
So the two letters that, basically, the beautification committee sends those two letters out. If we don't get any response of the committee. Then I present you guys with a picture of the house. You guys say we, you agree that it is dilapidated. And then you give them thirty days to get on your guys' agenda to please, it's basically you guys with the court in layman's terms. You can decide. Order them to tear it down, or you order me to get a bid to tear it down, and then put a rent.
There's an initial effort to try to get the property owner to take care of the issue on their own without the county involved, but then. As that timeframe moves into the future, if they fail to act, the ordinance gives us the ability to basically force. The issue, and the downside is, is the county will have to go in, the county will have to have a contract to go in. Demo the building and destroy, uh, demo the building and then dispose of it, and then we can then attach it on the property based on the cost of demo and the disposal.
Okay, now, I'm looking at. Looking at this prior to, in this letter that you're sending. With a, with a, I'm just giving. with a, with a, I'm just giving that, uh, an idea. With a, if a property owner receives a letter that says you have an option, the option is you to do this or we're going to do this. It would be a third option to give the property owner or the county or them to sign a real estate agreement to try to sell the property or somebody else to purchase and build their home here in Fayette County, West Virginia? That they could put it on the market to be sold, to be developed?
Again, you all, you, you can't force some.
No, I'm not saying forcing, I mean, we're, we're.
I think at the hearing possibly, when the property owner comes to you guys, you can recommend, hey, you're not going to use your property, here's a prime time.
We need housing.
Right, I think could that be done at the hearing where the property owner comes in here?
They, they could be done in progress, but if they are willing, if they're willing to sell the property, they're certain.
I mean, to, to stop a step that may cost us money and you never get money back. And maybe to put it on the market for somebody in New York City that, by gosh, don't want to be in New York City anymore. Come to think, I'm just looking at another option besides this to get something started.
And I.
For housing.
When people do call and we send the letter, if they actually call, sometimes they don't call because they've given us the wrong address on the tax, I mean, we do say, hey, if you're not going to be here, put a for sale sign in the yard, so I kind of already tell them that on the phone, but not.
No, that don't, I think you need to put that in initiative to say, listen, it's an eyesore. You're paying taxes on it. Would you like to have some money for it? And, and ask, you know, don't ask and say, would you like to sell the property, put it on the market? And the county market the property back. I'm, I don't know. I don't know whether we could do that or not, or maybe.
Land banking is where we actually buy the property when it goes to that tax sale. We would show up at the tax sale, or someone, not we, but somebody would show up on behalf of the commission.
And you get a real estate agent to do it, and there's some way that you, we can get a, a real, I'm just trying to figure out a way to market this property because somebody wants to live.
If the property owner agrees to it, we can pretty much do anything. But if, if they're not going to work for us, then we're going to.
Well, I know, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to cut off an avenue, not saying it doesn't need to be, cut off an avenue that we can market a piece of property if somebody has money and don't want to live in New York or California or some of these other places and come here and the cost of living is a lot less. But, uh, you know, here in the house, it's going to not be a big, you know, I'm just looking at another option to, to implement this thing, this housing, and I agree, we need housing. We have dilapidated properties, somehow working together with the property owner to sell the property and advertise it online out of state.
Yeah.
People here, that, I mean, the housing's needed, but I don't think the people here are going to take it.
And a lot of these people unfortunately will not sell it to a neighbor. They have, that's why we get the complaints, because the neighbors try to buy it for a couple thousand and they will not sell it to that neighbor.
Well, I mean, two thousand dollars to a neighbor or ten thousand dollars to a guy that lives in New York City that his house is worth a million dollars. I'm, I'm giving you an instance because I've known people that sold their property in these big cities who come here and live. What they get for their houses is to come here and pay for a piece of property and build a mansion. So, I mean, I just, I'm trying to think outside the box.
I feel like we could, if we send them a letter and we could, like in our, one of our initial letters, like these are some options.
Yeah.
You have.
Right.
And like John had outlined here, you guys have put this together, we did repair it within ninety days, sell it within ninety days, you know?
But if they sell it, that doesn't mean enough.
Well, no, but wasn't that what you were saying?
No, I'm saying that somebody that wants to live here. And that's because somebody's marked one piece of property and it has to be sold, to be demolished and rebuilt. Not just to sell a piece of property, somebody is just going to settle it and not do nothing.
Well, we could always send a, a notice to the new property owner that, that, you know, or is there a way we could attach something to a deed that the property is considered dilapidated and, and, uh, to put any.
I mean, again.
Purchasers.
If they're going to try to put some kind of restriction on the property, you would have to get the owners consent.
Yeah.
Would you, would you go whatever you wanted to be this far of restriction?
Could we, I mean, we've got a lot, we've got, I mean, so if we went through the beautification committee and, is it a list pending? If the commission ordered it demolished, if it went through the process and you guys order a house demolished without actually demolishing it, could they go ahead and put list pending?
List pendants?
Telling a potential buyer that, hey, this has been deemed dilapidated? Is, would that maybe?
I'd have to look at the statute on that, because it requires pending litigation. Simply being in front of the committee would qualify.
Yeah, well, I know previously, that's what the previous prosecutor put list pending, even though they hadn't spent the money yet, the commission ordered it demolished and there was no.
Or it's in front of us and is kind of.
Sure, I, I, I don't disagree, but I just I would like to take a look at the statute.
Oh, I think you should do.
What, what, if the statute may say.
But if there's some way of no, want, some way of attaching a notice, even if it's not an encumbrance to the deed, that that, that there is an obligation or some sort of, you know, what the implications are if you buy this property. That's, that's what I was thinking, like, is there a way to let them know, you know, the structure is considered dilapidated and here are the statutory rules, you know, if you buy it, would that structure impact this is what's going to happen. But of course, if they came back to us and said, you know, we sold it to, you know, this person, we could give that person a notice.
And that's unfortunate, what we have with a lot of our houses. They do sell it, they sell it for a few thousand dollars and then that person buys it because it's cheap and then they don't tear it down, they just have a few up and down gateways. They buy, but they don't tear it down either.
Figure out a way to put the prospective buyers on notice about what's going on and.
The homes that were across from Grants and Smithers, one was owned by a person in Arizona.
Virginia.
Well, there were, there was one guy, one, there were two properties that were
And that guy was.
Bought by somebody from either North or South Dakota.
Yeah, that's right.
And then he turned around and sold them to people in.
And then the California name change guy bought the old city hall. Hey, Michelle, do you have any ideas about that? About, like, how we might be able to give notice to potential buyers of land through the deed process or the documents in your office that.
So if we, if we.
That it's been deemed dilapidated.
The problem is.
I thought that's what the list pending was, that's what we previously did, but.
I mean, that, that would do it, what she's saying, but they'd have to have, they'd have to have somebody do a title search. And if they sell it to somebody and they don't do one, they wouldn't proceed it.
If it's, if there's something before the county commission, which as we all know is, um, the county court. I, I think you can still file a notice pending.
What's, what does it usually cost to demolish a structure?
So the typical coal company houses, which is most of ours are, you know, typical, without asbestos, because that could be whatever, um, the one company that also owns demolition landfill is looking probably seven to nine thousand. And that's them hauling it, you know, to their land that which they own here in Fayette County.
And I'll tell you, one thing I've noticed while I was out looking at these homes, there's more mobile homes than there are regular wood built homes.
And mobile homes are going to be tricky because sometimes the person who owns the property does not own the mobile home. Because a mobile home is personal property, I believe, not real estate, so that gets into a little bit of a legal hiccup.
Unless it's on the permanent foundation.
Correct, most agents are single wife, you know.
But the property owner is the one responsible for what's on the property.
Yeah, that's.
They can have it soon.
Yeah, it's just putting the lien if you guys decide to demolish it, the lien on the land.
Let's say if they turn the property over to us, we could sell the property, and the purchase of the property could actually be a demolition of the property. Correct, in other words, there's no cost to the county, there's no cost to them per, uh, purchasing other than demolition of the, the property buildings that own the property. Once the demo is done and the property is turned over to them and they can develop it any way they want to develop, well, develop for a home or anything else, I'm just trying to look at how to get it done quick without having a bunch of our funding in place to do this and say, okay, if you give us the property, we're going to advertise the property to give the property away for them to demo it.
And I think once you start getting people here, actual citizens, and you encourage them, hey, this is a prime time to sell your property, then they can go ahead and it won't cost anything but a couple certified letters and then give them thirty days. Historically, the commission have previously have given them thirty days to clean it up or then the county comes in and. I've got about ten that have been vacant for ten years that I've got the final notices ready. I could go ahead and send those out and then basically in January I could bring, present those and kind of see what a whole case.
Okay.
If, now Anthony has to do a lot of paperwork, because he had to actually get that notice.
It's point driven.
Yes, it's just letting his office know there.
Once this notice is sent out, Anthony, is there any contact that the commission or anybody else cannot have with these people once there's a notice sent out?
I mean, until, until they decide they don't want to communicate with us, I don't think there's any reason why we can't communicate with them. Now, the commu, when you say communicate with the commission, you're talking about.
It's one of us individually that wants to call and talk to them about, about it.
I'd be a little concerned about that simply because you guys at some point are going to be the, the court that decides what happens to the property, if it's just, you know, civil super and serving that it's not appropriate for a certain judge to have a conversation with, with the parties, you know, pending litigation. But certainly, property owners have to send.
Just want to give everybody something that you want, that you.
And if, you know, if we can get people to, even if they don't, even if they can't, they go, you know, report it, if they voluntarily give us a lien on the property and do their payments, that will be a step in that direction.
We've done that on three companies.
I'd like to see, at one time, if we could take one, they put it over to us and we can market the property to give to somebody to demolish it.
The only, the only problem I see with that is that we acquire ownership on it and we're going to be subject to the restrictions.
Your own rules.
Their own rules, that's why I asked how long, the time before we have to demolish it.
I don't know, I mean, and that's a legal thing, on the list pending, we basically are saying there is going to be money, but are there statutes of how long that lasts?
I know, I've seen the houses that they processed, take a few months.
The dependence is, is good until, there's a ten, according to what I just saw on the statute, there's a ten year statute of limitations on it, but you can do it.
I think I missed, you misunderstood what I said, when we market the property to be sold, the selling price is then demo of it.
Right.
And then we turn over the, the, the pair of property without the list pending.
Oh, without you ordering the customer, I mean, the property owner to.
They, in other words, if, if the property owner presently turns over the property, the to the county commission of the county, then we market the property to be sold. And the selling of the property is not, it's not cash for the property itself, it's to demo.
You demo it and dispose.
They demo it, they demo it, so the county doesn't have costs in it. The person that wants to buy demo, demo, demos the property.
The problem, the problem is that the county acquires ownership. Subjective, uh, rules and restrictions.
But what, what time do we have to? No, you have to auction, you can't put it on the market. So if you auction it in the terms of the auction, can you say that it has to be demoed?
Well, you can set a minimum price of.
I mean, realistically, if we auction it, we can set any restrictions on the selling of money.
So you can say that the, the restriction is, in selling a property, you have to demo, demo, uh.
Within thirty days.
Within thirty days.
Yeah, that'd probably be the terms of the auction.
I'm trying to look at, the county not having so much, but I, I agree it needs to be done, you're talking about four hundred houses.
It's a lot of money.
You're talking about a pile of money, I'm talking about doing something in a short period, a shorter period of time, if it would work. And not as much money the county would have involved in it, what I'm trying to find it.
And if we, and if we would auction it and it costs more than the demo, the extra money we could put back into the.
Well, the demos are there, no matter what it costs, you know, what I was going to do is, is, you know.
I think the only way that would work would be that I believe got an estimate for what the demolition disposal would be, the forty years. And then step back with the minimum bill.
Which the, the cheapest demolition company in the county is very good at giving estimates and they've hardly ever been over, I mean, it's, they're normally to the.
And can we mark this, market this out of state, if, if we come up with a process to do this, can we market this out of state?
As long as we auction the property, you, there's no restrictions on how the auction is advertised.
You can do one online and everything, okay. So I'm just trying to get it done in a simpler, quicker and more efficient way and less dummy involved in it.
If you have willing property owners.
Well, if you don't, then you go through the other process. But I'm sure everybody would like to put their son back out of the property, if, if someone would even maybe agree to do it, market it and sell it, on the, on the restrictions that has to be provided. I'm just trying to think, trying to think how to, what we're doing. Just give me something to think about.
So what, what, do we have a decision right now or are we just discussing?
We're just discussing it.
Okay. I, I'd say the one thing that I have, I, I'm not sold on the putting the photos of the structure and the property owners on the website.
I think we can, I think if the structures are visible on the road and you take a picture from a publicly accessible location, the information is that ownership is public. I mean, I can walk into an assessor's office and say, who owns, parcel number, map number, uh, or I can get on the internet and get on the assessor's website and that information. Legally, I think we can do it, whether, whether or not the county commission should do it, is a whole, is a whole other issue. I mean, that's a, that's a separate issue, but legally, I think if we wanted to, um, have a dilapidated hall of shame, it'd be really.
Well, we have a tax hall of shame, I'm in it. I mean.
They killed us, they have their PIS dusts.
We publish it in the.
But, but as a practical matter, as long as the picture is taken of a public, we would tell the location and you get the information off of the assessor's website. Uh, now, of course, one other thing to keep in mind, we probably, if we're going to do this, we probably should do a quick check with the servant, I'm sorry, the county clerk's office to make sure the property hasn't been sold because the assessor's property records are a little bit behind. It takes a while for it to make sure we have it right now.
And I do that, I have access to theirs, so.
But it's simply a question going in and pulling up the last owner's name and seeing if there were any recent.
Well, if they have a pocket, a, a pocket, what, a pocket thing. Pause it there. What, nevermind.
I'm not familiar with that term, but so, so basically, I think at the end of the day, we can do it legally. If those guidelines are followed. Of course, it's a separate issue as to whether or not the county commission should do it, whether or not you all make a decision.
Well, I think that we've got multiple owners with these types of properties and they haven't done nothing with them.
Well, and, and then that might be a, a measure, if you have more than one or more than, or three or more or something that we, we will publish it, but I just want to consider, I want us all to think about what that policy should look like. Because if we're trying to address people who were like, you know, multiple offenders and offending all over the place, and we have a, a poor family or even maybe somebody doesn't even know they inherited the property.
Well, I know one, one property, I looked at years ago, there's eighteen heirs, how do you get eighteen heirs?
It was, um, because what happens when you don't have a will, we tore it down and like.
How do they even know, I mean, I mean, I was only eighteen, no, I mean. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
All right, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call and call on this one until we get it back on the agenda.
So the ones that the beautification committee, I'm getting ready to send out the final notices, do you want to go ahead and pursue those and follow the ordinance as is until we've got? Because we have about ten that have been vacant for a very long time that.
I'd like to see the process. You know, and if y'all don't mind, I'd like, I, I, I'm.
What do you mean, you'd like her to go ahead and proceed with those?
Yeah, just, I mean, it's up to you.
And these are, I mean, these are people that are.
Just to see the process, because I don't think I've ever.
You continuing. You continuing this.
Sat through one, I mean, because we didn't have a committee and there's funding issues, so I've kinda held off, but. Um, I want you guys to see what we're sending out and then let's say we can go through the process and then if there's something you wanna change. Um, we could, you know, change, but I think at least we start, cause there's a lot of them, winter time, I find a whole lot more. Because trees are gone and she.
Well, in this process, they'll come to the county commission, right?
Yeah, so basically, what will happen, I will send the final notice, if you haven't responded to us, I will have to put it on the agenda. They will, um, I will present you pictures first, that you guys can see what, and then you will agree with us. And then Anthony will basically type up a notice of violation that says, you know, I went to your property, it's the pictures. And then they have so many days to call and get on the agenda and then they will come.
Tom, you wanna hear that?
But basically, when they come to you guys, you are, it's actually a hearing, you can say, hey. You know, you've not done your house thirty days, if you don't tear it down, we're gonna tear it down, or you can say, if they come and say. Hey, you know, we're gonna get it for now, that's up to you guys to decide, basically, whatever y'all vote as a, you know, whether to tear it down, let them keep it. Um, ask them to go ahead and sell it or, it's basically a court.
I think you should definitely proceed under the current ordinance, and I think we need to vote on that, that's.
Yeah, just our current order.
Yeah, we'll go, I'll do that, I've got it ready, I just didn't wanna send them out and pick, that's what it changes. And then, I'd just like a little more time to think on any changes, but, and I think we can get that knocked out in January.
And like I said, the, okay, I know I showed Tom the RGIS that Oak Hill does. It's not really the pictures, it's more transparency, so if a property owner complains to me or the board. The, they're the pin on that property and they can follow up to make sure that we're doing our, you know, have we done anything, have we notified the owners, but. That would be an, an RGIS done and. Just the different layers, like the trail, it would be just a layer and letter control would be on there, if someone had complained about a house, you can see it. We're doing our job instead of. Okay, cause that requires somebody to.
Alrighty, well, at this time, I'm gonna move, we go into executive session to discuss the following things. Um, changes to the circuit clerk's office, we have the elected, uh, circuit clerk here, Travis Prince. Um, we're gonna go into executive session, discuss some things that you'd like to discuss, if that's what would be personnel related. Um, and executive session to discuss with legal counsel, uh, building purchase. Um, purchasing another building that's nearby for, um, to expand probation into that office. And then the, the third matter is, um, update animal control, job description duties. Um, with legal counsel, I had some concerns about, um, some of the things we discussed doing in this regard.
Just to clarify, our last two issues are gonna fall under. Ten legal, I guess, most issues would fall under.
Personnel. Correct. Correct, alright, eleven point three. Alright, we're back from executive session at eleven thirty-two or twelve thirty-two. We went out at eleven thirty, right? And we discussed the things I said we would, um, with regard to the changes to the circuit clerk office. Um, the elected circuit clerk, uh, pitched the county commission to. Uh, he would like to keep the current circuit clerk. On board, um, at least until her retirement date, eligibility date of July one, to help give him some transition time. And ask the commission for financial assistance in doing that. After we discussed that. I decided that I would make the motion. Hold on, let me find the, alright, um, that we pay. Um, a salary of thirty-five thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars a year. To, um, put her at the exempt level where overtime would not be paid. And that will end up costing the county approximately, if she stays until July first or somewhere in there. Approximately twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, I think this is gonna give the county, um, be a great benefit to the county since Mr. Prince has no background in, um. In the courts or, or circuit court or that sort of record keeping, which is highly technical. Um, I think it'll help the county a lot if we're able to do this, so I move that we. Uh, keep Debbie on at that amount, that's our amount. All those in favor? Okay, second item. Um, building purchase, we discussed with council, um, making an offer on, on a local building. And whether or not to, uh, release the. Appraisal we had done on it to the owner of the building, um, I move that we go ahead and. Authorize council to release the appraisal to that owner. Um, with the provision that it is not to be shared and it is property of Bay County Commission.
Certainly.
All those in favor? A further, um, move that, um, we authorize council to make an offer. At the amount of the appraised, at the appraised amount to the owner.
Second.
All those in favor? And, um, under attorney-client privilege, we did come up with an amount that council could. Um, negotiate with beyond that. Next item, uh, updates to animal control, um, job description and duties. Um, we have an animal control officer, we have only one now, or we had had two. Um, who's doing a great job. We have a need to have additional help down at the park because. Bay County Humane Society is just getting started and the county is very involved in running that shelter. Um, further, we have a need to have someone on the premises at the park to open the gate for various people, whether it's wreckers. Bringing in, um. County vehicles after hours that, that need to go to our maintenance facility down there. Uh, or whether it's actual deputies bringing theirs in and dropping their cars off after hours. We have a small house down there, we believe it's around six hundred square feet, we discussed. Modifying the position description, um, for the animal control person. Um, to include letting people in and out of the gate, checking on the animals after hours and, and monitoring. Any security cameras we have installed at the shelter and or the park. Um, so I move that we do modify that position description to include those things.
Second.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I further move that we allow, that we offer to our animal control officer. Um, the residence at the park, the six hundred square foot residence at the park. Um, where she could live. And perform these additional duties. Which would effectively raise her salary from, uh. Twenty-seven thousand four hundred fifty a year to, um, thirty-five thousand five hundred sixty-eight thousand. The exempt amount a year where she would not be entitled to overtime, but she would be entitled to a free place to stay and she would have paid utilities. So, I move that we offer her, uh, the residence, uh, to lease the residence under those terms.
Second.
All those in favor? Hey, that should be it for the meeting. And then this is the letter.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that specifically the one that we missed out. Which letter might I wanna change? Yeah. The job description in the home. See ya.
Thank you, Anthony.
Have a lovely day.
Oh yeah, she's editing. We gotta finish these letters first.
Which one are you working on? Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Fix that first sentence and then. I would just. Yeah. Well, you gotta get done.
So, yeah, I can do, I can do it.
Hey, I think the second letter looks really good, I think at the end, discussion with the, um. I think it's commissioners or commission or board or something, but. Um, and then I, at the end of that, I would just add, please RSVP to confirm your attendance, I mean, I wanna make sure they're coming. That mouse we have to do?
No, no. No, I, I will see your take on it after we get off the record.
You go with those. This letter was straight.
Thank you.
You wanna handle, hand me the scribble on one, I'll show the others.
Yeah, and I wanna make sure, you said, um, take the as leaders and put it.
After the, between, between the end of this sentence, discuss these matters as leaders and then.
So basically, you have this changed during its. November seventeenth meeting, Bay County Commission discussed creating a new county wide emergency management advisory board. As well as fosterman nine-one-one center. And then, um, we will be held Bay County nine-one-one center to discuss these matters. I would say further.
Okay.
Um, with stakeholders. Then, as leaders tasked with safety, smooth operation of your individual municipalities, your participation is vital as well as your willingness to assist. It, it needs a safe willingness, Amy, I just noticed it says.
Willingness.
Willingness.
So you're planning on making a, a different board to control the nine-one-one center?
Oh, I think we need a board, it's, it, we just need to decide what that board needs to look like, whether it's an advisory board or a. A community committee or something.
Yeah.
Definitely need something to kind of guide that, just kinda like we have for day report, you know, we have community impressions board. Needs something that's kinda overseeing that, so hopefully we can. Back off.
And do you want me after I'm done with these to stamp any now?
Yeah, yeah, you guys go with that.
Stamp away.
Stamp and all, both of those letters for us? Okay, and, and that case, I move we adjourn.